It's 7:03, so I'm gonna call this meeting of the Rundle Planning Board to order, and we will start off with a roll call.
Marie.
Oh, Marie Vergey, Secretary.
John Derkindren.
Bob Coon.
Roger Moore.
Rich Benham.
James Lowery.
Tad Redway, Planner.
Next item up is the approval of the agenda.
Can I make a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Now, we have approval of minutes.
Okay, which minutes?
We should do November 13th at page four.
Did we ever do November 1st, the site walk?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're doing...
We're doing November 13th?
Correct.
The draft minutes over at the school.
Right. So there's a correction on page four. The plot had hung up and the question's been made.
Motion to...
Motion to approve this.
I guess I'm gonna second that, because I was the only other person that was there. I don't think we can approve the minutes. Because there's only two of us that were there. We don't have a majority to approve, so we're gonna have to... There was Tom, Bob, and Marty. So we're gonna have to table these minutes to the next meeting. Unless Marty shows up.
Somebody just drove in.
Three out of the four, that's all we need.
Oh, it looks like Tom.
Tom, that would work, because Tom was also there. Yeah, it's Tom.
Hold off.
Okay.
Whoops, here comes Tom.
Sorry, I went to the wrong place.
That's okay, you're just in time.
You saved the day.
We need you to help us vote on minutes of a meeting.
I looked at him earlier, I found that problem.
November 13th?
Want to mail to us?
No, November 13th was the...
This is the third time that we've looked on what had been changed and these words were changed. No pressure.
Okay.
Yeah, no pressure.
Could I table this for now, until I...
Yeah.
Show where I'm looking at?
We can do that. And, yeah, we'll table it to the end of the meeting. Have we looked at December 11th?
They're done.
They're done, okay. And January 8th?
Needs to be done now.
Okay.
I move to approve the minutes as written.
That's seconded.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All of us in favor?
One extension.
Two extensions, I wasn't here. So it's four in favor and two extensions. Okay. Next item up on the list is the proposed Alfred Road District. Mr. Planner, would you like to fill us in?
At the last meeting, we briefly went over what the intent of the ART district was. Essentially, to remind you, the Complaint Committee proposed that it was approved by town meeting that the district would be a business mixed-use district. Very similar to the DB2 district in that it suggests the recommendation was that it be a business district primarily, a lot of mixed uses in it. And also to allow larger buildings in it, since the threat of big box store creep will probably be diminished significantly because of changes in the market and in the industry. And therefore, they had recommended larger buildings in that district, specifically up to 100,000 square feet. Again, mainly the same kinds of uses and in the DB2, very similar to the DB2 district. And also have recommended that the district boundaries follow lot lines and be extended to the power lines. The one thing that wasn't discussed too much was the issue of there are right now two mobile home parks in this district. And there wasn't really much discussion about whether we're going to have the mobile home overlay district being that. That would be something that the Planning Board would have to address more, as we're in the complaint. And therefore, the characterization, I'm sorry, we don't have the whiteboard, so we can't put it up on the whiteboard here. But the district basically is punctuated by smaller lots along the road. A lot of uses that exist along the road, some residential in there mixed with a lot of business uses. There aren't that many large parcels that are currently vacant. There is one behind Doosan's property on the northern side of the road. That's in back behind his building, that's a fairly large parcel. There is, of course, the Ledgeview subdivision parcel, which you all will remember, because we went through a whole Ledgewood subdivision, and yet it was never brought to final fruition by the ALD. That was on Ledge Cliff Road, which is on the south side of the road. And then there's two other larger parcels that are on the south side, one along about 14 acres that's along the power lines. And so an additional number of parcels that are up along Drew's Mill Road. So that's the characteristics of the zone. And what we have to do here is to come up with the ordinance and deal with the issues of, first of all, uses in that particular district. And what I gave the board the last time was essentially what's called the Alfred Road District, you'll see it. It essentially is, that shows all the uses that are currently permitted in the community commercial north district. So that shows what's existing. And under omitted uses, what you now have, if you go to the 7.4 Alfred Road Business District that I just gave you, ART, this is basically the DB2 district uses that currently we have approved for the DB2. And since there was a lot of parallels between Alfred Road and DB2, I have included it now in the Alfred Road Business District. Because many of the uses that we currently have in the CCN district are not, are not very inclusive, do not include all of the types of uses we had in the DB2 district, and certainly different than the Alfred Road Business District. You'll also notice I got rid of a lot of the annoying sections that we had in the current CCN district that deal with essentially shoreline zoning issues. And I think I mentioned that last time, the shoreline zoning issues. Because we have a chart system in the current ordinance, we have to include all the shoreline zoning, soil erosion, wildlife conservation practices that are allowed in the shoreline overlay districts. Those have to also, in the current format, be included in the CCN district. Under the new format, we won't have to, you put those anymore. Those will just go, stay focused entirely within the shoreline zoning districts unless you feel there's a need to include those in the ART district. We have not included them in any other districts. Things like motorized traffic on dirt roads, wildlife conservation practices, silviculture preservation, things of those nature that are basic conservation activities that are considered low-impact activities in the shoreline district. And would be probably along by right in these other districts. Do you have a question, Bob?
Yeah. Where from the Bitterford line to the power line, is there any shoreline zone? There isn't.
Nope, there isn't. So why is it any...
You're trying to understand your explanation, all of those things were in there because we had to have them in there because of the shoreline overlay.
Yeah, because what we have is a chart system. Remember, we have that land use chart that has all the uses listed on it. And if you don't have those, and therefore, preservation, you know, soil and water conservation practices, if we didn't check that off in every of our other districts, they would be prohibited. And so that's why we check them off as permitted uses in all districts. I don't think we have to do that under the new format. And that's why you see them listed under the ART, the material that I gave you last week, is because that's what's listed as permitted uses in those districts right now. And that was because of the format, that's because of our chart format, and because it was required under DDP that we include those lists of uses for all districts. We don't have to do that, because we're dealing with a different land use schedule than we do in the current one. We're doing it by district. So I propose we take them out. Or we could put, if you want, we could put a catch-all phrase in every single district about soil erosion control. We never had to do it until we did the shoreline zoning rewrite in 2010. We didn't even have those categories in our original land use statute. So the question is dealing with uses, permitted uses and conditional uses in the ART district. What fits, what doesn't? And the list that I'm giving you right now, under the 7.4 that I've shown here, is the uses that are allowed in the DB2 district. And see if those fit in the ART district.
Can I ask another question? I'm sorry, we're trying to compare this Alfred Road District with the DB2, when isn't this more comparable to the Gateway District? I mean, that's the gateway coming in from Bitterford there into a mixed-use residential business. I mean, it's almost the same as, almost the same as the Gateway District, I mean, in my mind.
Well, the only problem is the Complaint Committee saw it as being a more intensive use than the Gateway District. They saw it as allowing much larger uses and more intensive uses than the Gateway District. But since they were talking about 100,000 square foot buildings out there versus the Gateway District, as you recall, which has 10,000 square foot buildings.
Well, the board had said larger, the complaint is suggesting that it goes 10,000.
Right. For...
For the Gateway.
You decided on 10,000.
We decided 10,000.
And they asked us to look at making that smaller.
Right.
But they're looking at 100,000 out there.
What I see the big issue in this area is you've got, it's almost like two sub-districts as proposed, the one nearer up to Bitterford, that's almost exclusively residential with some smaller businesses right along 111. And definitely all residential back in behind there, you know, within that thousand-foot section, at least on the south side, north I'm not quite as familiar with. Until you get beyond the New Road intersection, where there are several larger parcels that I think would be more conducive, I don't know if I could go to 100,000 by any means, but larger sized buildings. And that's, I think, I mentioned it last meeting, Bob, that's where the struggle, I think, in the way this district is proposed right now, the way the layout of the district is gonna be very problematic, because there are things that we're gonna look at on the parcels farther to the west and think are okay, and then somebody's gonna bring up, well, but what about the parcels farther east? And how do you balance that?
And I understand that, and I'm looking at it and thinking to myself that there's only like three or four parcels east of the New Road. Because when you get to Book of Alice, what's that guy's name? Not Book of Alice.
No.
The Auto Dealer.
Aqua Viva.
Aqua Viva, which bisects his lot and cuts across to the storage unit and bisects that lot, there, you know, there's only three houses past that before you get to Holly's.
But what you also have is 1,000 feet back off the road.
There's nothing out there. There's nothing on the northern side of the road, there's nothing out there. There's nothing, it goes down to the Bitterford dump.
Yep.
Or the old dump. On the other side of the road, if you go back 1,000 feet, you're gonna end up crossing Old Alfred Road, and you'll get a couple of houses there. But then again, there's not much out there.
On the north side, you have some residences, and you have Neil's Motors.
Yep, that's Bitterford. Neil's Motors is in Bitterford.
That is in Bitterford.
Yep, it is. I know it, I have the same problem. I think of Rundle at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
But it's not.
That's where the sun needs to be.
We need to acquire that property.
Yeah, all the way up to the top of the hill.
Right.
While we're considering the size and dimensions with the, it used to be State Department, that we do have the mobile park set aside, that every community had to do their share in terms of this was existing, and I did have to have the mobile home park, but some means of expansion. And I think that's why we had opened up another area in town. Couldn't we just make the existing, do the sentence, making the existing mobile park? It's good, I mean, conforming?
Well, I think, I think we do with the very second statement, all residences legally existing in the district as of June 11th. So we've made that conforming, just by the fact that they're there.
Well, only what is currently there.
Well, yes.
There's no expansion or anything like that, and I'm not sure, because it says residences...
One can leave and another one can go.
Right, what about, because these, you know, the lots belong to the park, and the trailers, the mobile homes belong to the owners, so that means if a mobile home leaves, it couldn't come back, or it wouldn't be conforming, you know?
Okay, I hadn't thought about that, and I'm not sure that that would be the case, but it would make an interesting...
Well, I mean, here it says residences, so, you know, in terms of Bob's point, it makes sense to me that mobile home park has been there for so long, it should just...
Be a conforming use.
Yeah.
Existing.
But that would still prevent them from expanding out.
No, if it's a conformal use.
If it's a conformal use, yes.
And I think, I'm not sure you wanna do that, only because you addressed that through the mobile home overlay district. That's how you really deal with that.
I know part of the first mobile home that we come to is actually in Bitterford. When you turn down and go in, the last three or four mobile homes are located in Bitterford. So this really is, it is.
Well, I'm just bringing up, because I'm just trying to get my head around the district and these proposed sizes and these different uses. And we layered this stuff, we have the district, and we have the business, and we have the back businesses now and so we're, and now we're gonna have all the ladies on top of the, I mean, holy cow.
We're gonna make things complex, right?
Is it a given that on the southern side of the road, it goes back a thousand feet?
Well, I mean, that was the issue, that frankly speaking, the Complaint Committee just followed boundaries, it did not really address the issue of the primary residences. We did follow boundaries on the undeveloped parcels of land, for obvious reasons. But we really didn't tackle the issue of where that boundary really is in the residential area. I think the only interior parcel that I can think of that would be impacted would be the flames, that's about it. That's down New Road for a distance. That big piece of land that is open next to Alpin, as you probably remember, is a Sean Doosan parcel. That is R1, that's in the R1 district. So that's a residential district. Everything else is pretty much, if it's not on the road, it's pretty much residential off of 111, which is really problematic in how we deal with this district. I don't see a lot of potential for conversion to small business, although surely can. Is that really compatible with the residential neighborhood? And I should, why don't I just read the Alfred Road District the way it was passed in the Complaint, if for those of you who might have it. It basically says, "The Alfred Road District designation applies to the eastern end of Route 111 of the Bitterford City Line to the western edge of the utility quarter. Uses the Alfred Road District should allow a mix of small, medium, and large-scale retail, office, service, low-impact manufacturing, and community uses. The uses that would impact the surrounding residential areas or generate significant volumes of traffic may be permitted with conditions. Single and multifamily dwellings will be permitted, but new residential subdivisions, as defined by state statute, will be excluded." Development standards, it says, "New construction shall be designed to reflect the character of the surrounding residential neighborhoods with significant reduction in lot sizes, lot frontages, and setbacks. A pedestrian-oriented approach to development will be applied where feasible. Site conditions, infrastructure, and distance from arterial and derarterial will determine the maximum density and type of development."
We need a, this is full, it's not recording anymore. Good thing we've got the tape.
That's good.
It was plugged in, I hope it's charged.
So do I. That's okay. Out of secretary, right quick.
So given that, I mean, you've got that there, that's... It recognizes, as Jamie said, that this is a, there's nothing monolithic about this district. This is probably more problematic than most of the districts, in that we do have sub-character areas in it. And the Complaint Committee recognized that, but they weren't going to tackle subdividing it, they left that to you folks. So the question really is, what, how are we gonna do this? Because this is probably, we've probably got more residential in this district than we have even in the DB2, or even the DB1.
I'd like to hear from the residents, the owners, property owners, what they think.
And that's something we didn't do at the Complaint Board. This district was kind of done quickly, I mean, because there was a consideration of whether we're gonna continue down Route 111, that was, I think, the issue, whether that was going to occur. Right now, that Complaint Committee has not revisited the Route 111 quarter. So my gut feeling is, since they're in Royal now in the R4 district, my gut feeling is that this is what we're gonna work with for the moment, is just this, the Alfred Road District, just extending down the power lines, and that's it.
I'm just trying to think, when you go past the New Road, how many residences are there?
Well, there's several, probably six or three.
You think?
There's two or three on the right that are back in the woods in there.
Right, on the left-hand side, as you're heading toward Sanford, yes, there's a couple back in through there.
On the right-hand side, there's trailers, the house.
Yeah.
So the cloud.
Oh, yeah, they're on Drew's Mills.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're right. Because there's a bunch of them there, yeah.
Want me to pull an aerial? I think I've got an aerial somewhere. I just wanted to, I'd get it to be next door.
And to be safe, maybe, I have all of that recorded on the computer, I just didn't realize to delete it from now. If you know how to delete.
I do not.
Maybe we should at least check and see if the moving plate was working. All of that is saved on a hard drive.
It's just hard to imagine down through this quarter, 100,000 square foot. Yeah, that's a big building.
Well, it depends on where you're talking. If you're talking Phil Abbey's, that could easily accommodate 100,000 square foot. Yeah. He's got lots of room there, and it's out of the way, and it wouldn't impact anything.
Where was that?
Phil Abbey's, yeah, you know, that was sold and developed.
Yeah. Well, and that's where I always go in with, you've got almost two distinct districts within it, you know? Or areas within the district.
And even Sean Doosan's area, he's got quite a bit.
Yeah, he does.
And he's got that other part, like...
Yeah. You're talking about his house, or his business?
Well, he's got decent size on both of it. So...
But without looking at...
Let's try to keep it simple, that would be my advice. And keeping in mind the definition.
Yeah, that problem's been solved.
Was it recording a while earlier?
Very little. First couple of minutes, and then it stopped.
Are there, on these permitted uses, are there any that we wanna exclude?
Well, yeah.
Yeah, that would be the question, we should look at.
That's what I'm saying.
At least we can pick out Marina.
Well, that's what I was, the staff just helped out to me.
You don't wanna put a Marina back there.
Well, no, it'd just be a little bit of work to get Marina out there.
Well, Tad's, we can take a quick look.
He can have this out tonight.
Oh, he did.
He did, yeah.
Is there an extra one anywhere?
What do you need?
The new one that Tad handed out tonight?
7.4, yeah, it's all... Sure. Yeah, grab that one. Oh, great idea. Where'd that come from?
Other than that, do we have a definition of, this, I'm looking at number 34, it says recreation facility passive, do we have an actual definition of that?
Yeah, we should, we did.
We do, yeah.
We talked about that.
I think it was all, it's non-motorized.
Yeah.
I'm not positive, but I think that that's what the definition is.
Right.
But almost everything has motors these days. What do you mean by non-motorized? You mean non-motorized vehicles?
No, non-motorized. I think that's exactly what it means, it's non-motorized. You're not gonna have snowmobiles, you're not gonna have...
Take a Jim, take a Jim, you've got all kinds of motors, it's motorized.
But health clubs are allowed in that district.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, recreational facility is...
Yeah, that's...
Right. What does passive actually mean?
And then we discussed that last week for another reason, I can't remember what it was, though.
Yeah.
That's right, by the way, but we're gonna be doing a site walk on Saturday.
No, that site walk is scheduled for Sunday, by the way.
Do you have the definitions there, Jamie?
Okay, good. On January 18th, I looked at that, and I'm not gonna be there.
And we have recreational facility, commercial, and then parks and recreation.
There's no passive in there.
Oh. Assuming that this is...
It's the latest.
Who knows in my stack of stuff? But regardless, we would need to...
We need to make sure that if it's there, it's defined.
Right.
Because basically, by any, by definition, recreation is active, really, you're involved. So I think we need to define that.
Do you need some movie screens? That'd be interesting. That'll be interesting.
And, you know, for the same, in, in the same vein, as we're thinking about that, under conditional number twelve, it says excluding powersports amusements. And again, powersports, what does it mean? Powersports, you, I mean, they, they have these RV stations, you know? Is that what we're talking about? These little RVs that are done inside? Or are we talking about go-karts?
Chain tosses.
Yeah.
Can I come and watch? You want the EMTs there?
No, no, no.
Comes to it.
He's really good.
They haven't had an accident yet.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking of the guy.
Do we have, is there a definition of powersports?
I didn't see that. I did not see that. I think one way of eliminating that, John, is putting outdoor recreational facilities. You're eliminating motorized, and you're afraid you're gonna be worrying about what's happening indoors. Then recreational facilities.
Yeah, but you could have these, these little, you know, RV things going on outside too.
Not if they're gonna make noise.
No, they don't, really. Most of them are electric power. And even so, you know, it, what if, I mean, you know, you could have electric go-karts and things like that. Is that also a problem? What are, what's the problem with powersports? It's noise, right? So let's address what the problem is.
So it could be noise. It could be.
Okay, I found some stuff. How's he doing this? I don't know how you wanna get at this.
Just hold them up.
I can do that.
Until we say.
Until your arms, arms get.
Can you zoom in for us?
Tape it to the wall. You won't see it from the wall. No, you can do it from the wall. This is just a.
I think he's got it upside down.
Yeah, because you would like it. But this just shows a little piece of it. I looked at their amusement. So we got that, and then.
Yeah, we left the silly little things in there, but then.
Aerial. I actually have an award.
Yeah, that was part of the conversation, was to make sure all of the uses are in the definition.
Well, pump this out. Okay. This has gone through, this has gone through the order. As you can tell, it was actually through the rain. Okay, so, question, what is this thing? Well, very simply put, here's a bit of a line right here. Jaco Viva, okay? As we proceed down, see, basically, Acaviva, residence. Who's Hollis? It should be Hollis right there. Residence, residence, empty residence. This is open space for a subdivision, and then we had Acaviva. So we have, you know, then we have the, we have the, we have the truck right there. Gen L right there, or excuse me, Gen L right here. We have Agway. Blue Land is over here. So I don't remember what this, that's a.
That, I believe, is the, the gentleman that has the landscaping business.
That's a landscaper. Okay. This is a landscaping business. That's a business. I think that's a landscaper, because he's got landscaping.
And the residence on each.
Yeah, residence on each side. And we've got, you know, the, obviously, Agway. This has got a couple of trailers. I'm not, I think there's a business in there. Because he had.
The carpet cleaning, plastic cleaning.
And then here's the, here's the lobster place.
No, that's the electrical place.
That's the electrical place, right. Lobster place is.
Down road a bit.
Right there. And then we've got the car place, and then we've got, here we've got the trailer park. Trailer park here. Trailer parks there. Then it starts opening up. It starts opening up a little bit. On this side, we suddenly now start going into larger parcels. This, I believe, is, that's Ledge Cliff, I think.
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, that's Ledge Cliff here. And you can see we have residences here, and then we have, this is Laflame right here. You can see you've got a couple residences in between. And over here, and this is that parcel of land that, that belongs to.
This is all moved over. How far back would a thousand feet be from Old Alvin on that?
Well, just strangely enough, I brought that other.
This, I think, is a thousand, this was a thousand.
Shows a thousand.
So. It would cut right up in through, I believe, the corner of Sean's property.
It cut, it just cuts the corner of Sean's property. I've got it and put it out there, but you can't see it. So you have the map.
So if you picture that open field, it almost comes up in bisecting and comes right up in through to the, the north or the easterly corner.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Right, right into here.
Right.
Because here's, it's do sit right here, so it comes across here. Here's Laflame, and it comes across Laflame's property like south. You'll notice on that map, there's that little cul-de-sac. That's basically right here.
Okay.
There is a road there now. There's that cul-de-sac, so you've got, you've got a. It really doesn't actually go into the adjacent property. It goes through here, through the cul-de-sac, and then down through here.
Well, it essentially follows 111.
Follows 111. So what, what basically.
Right, yeah, I was just trying to get an idea of how far back a thousand feet would be.
And it does incorporate Laflame, and it does incorporate these properties, but it also incorporates all these properties, including the subdivision, which is residential. So it goes all the way across through here. And, you know, the issue is, obviously, these are all residential and oriented towards Old Alfred Road. It's a very strong residential district, and there's no businesses in here except for.
I thought, instead of splitting that, that zone into two different ones, we take that area and put it into, is it R2 next door?
It's R1.
R1?
Right.
Maybe they could, I think they're more suited to being an R1.
Yeah, a portion of it is R2. The portion that's R2 is, remember Alpin's lot? We made him R1. His lots, this one. I'll talk about that. His lot is, is, is this one right here? Remember this one?
Yep.
So it basically, this is the R2 over here, and most of the rest of this is all R1 here. So we put it into R1 here, put the rest of this on R2. Not sure why it's R2, but it is. And as you know, as you remember, all of, all of Bartlett Farms Two, which is down here. All of Bartlett Farms Two is, if this is all, all R2. All R2s from here. So we have, we have stripped R1, and then R1 comes around and goes down here. So, I mean, if you make Laflame, you could pull it up here, and then run it along through here, and, and up, and then just along these properties there. That's pretty much what you would do. There's not a lot of business opportunity.
It's residential, you know? Excluding the residential, and that's what it's supposed to be. A mixed-business residential area. It would seem like it might be easier just because of the nature of the areas. If they have this, more of this stuff be conditional. Make sure it fit, to fit with the existing neighborhood, where you know where they're proposing.
The other thing you have to concern yourself is, do you want business intrusion in this area? Old Alfred Road. That's really the issue. Right now, you're allowing it. And the only one who's ever taken advantage of it, well, this deep has been.
He's been there a hundred years.
He's been there forever. So.
Oh, yeah, that.
And he's, he's also legal in the district.
Well, then he's got a residence right there next to it.
Right, exactly. So it's, he's got a mixed-use facility there. But the issue is, I mean, this, this subdivision, for instance, which we can't see very well on this, but this subdivision, doesn't need to show up. This subdivision, right here off of Old Alfred Road, it's never gonna be residential. Nor do you want it to. Nor do I, frankly speaking, don't think that the covidence of that subdivision would permit it, in the sense of home business, and it's probably a little regulated. Here's the old farm. Do you want business in there? No, I don't think we want business on Alfred Road. Besides, this is gonna be changing anyways. They're gonna be pulling this thing over. Either this way, or I believe this way, and.
With the road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is gonna T-bone this end of the, of Old Alfred Road, or excuse me, of New Road. So New Road's gonna be the intersection, and it's gonna swing up, actually, I believe, right here. So it's gonna be ninety-degree intersection, and then Old Alfred Road's supposed to T-bone into that. Very far from the intersection. But, you know, obviously, this is a huge problem for DMT. You know, I think our accident, our DMT records, accident records reflect that, which is why they want to do it. Too much activity occurring in here. And you guys have been out here on it, on, during commute time, what it's like.
It would even be worse if all the farms was fully developed.
Oh, oh, yeah. Oh, when that, when that kicks in, and it's, you know, the real estate market's starting to heat up, but.
Then everybody's gonna figure out it's easier to turn right.
Oh, yeah.
And head down the mountain road.
Might. It depends what your destination is. It's not easier to go down the mountain road if you're going to Sanford.
If you want the turnpike too.
If you're going the turnpike, absolutely. If you're going to a turnpike, you go mountain road. Yeah, definitely. Do not want to deal with this mess. So it's gonna put a lot more pressure on the mountain road. Luckily, it's the Denver side of the mountain.
But, but given that this is supposed to be a mixed-use district with residential, I'm just thinking it would make more sense to say, what are the property lines going back at a thousand feet? And just follow the property lines.
Well, what's interesting, yeah, I agree, but, you know, what's interesting about the district is, we say it's mixed-use residential, and I think it's mixed-use residential to the purposes of existing residential, and anybody wants to cut off a piece for their kids. It's not promoting residential, because it says, basically, the complaint committee said, no, to any subdivisions of any kind. And you can say you want multifamily, but you, a multifamily is going to meet the standards of a subdivision, standard subdivision. So, I mean, that's kind of a contradiction of terms.
Unless it's two.
Then it's not multifamily. It's duplex. Multifamily's three or more. But if you're gonna build a multifamily, that's considered a subdivision. Yeah, you're right. Two, that's the duplex. But if they do a multifamily, by definition, that's three. And by definition, on the state subdivision ordinance, if you do three or more units in a building, it's considered a subdivision. So any subdivision, per se, is not really permitted in this district. Which means it's either by incrementalism, now we do it every five years, we do a division, or it's a family division. So they're not trying to, basically, what the complaint committee is saying, those people who have had parcels of land who want to divide it for the children, let them do it. Don't deny them that, but don't allow any, any residential development in here. So otherwise, which pretty much says to me, this really isn't mixed use. It's mixed use because it's existing residential in that district, not because we're encouraging new residential. If you were incurring new residential, we wouldn't have a restriction on subdivision. So. So that's, that's, unless it's, unless we have it as part of a, you know, an overall project, like we do in the DV2, where if it's part of a comprehensive PUD type of project, where you have business and residential, then we'll, then, then we'll let you have residential. And we have a lot more opportunity for that in the DV2 than we do here, because we only have, as you can see, there's not a lot of parcels that are really available. We've got this parcel here along the power line, and some of these back portions here, and this is Ledge Cliff here, which has been proposed as a residential development. And then we have, this is the Dooson property, right here. And this is, I mean, he's already, he's already seen Sean's plans for commercial back in here, commercial office. So it's a ledge, so it's getting, on set septic. It's gonna be a bit of an issue, a bit of a challenge. But some, you know, these bigger ones make sense, but smaller stuff going here. I mean, this is, this is Ledge Cliff. I'm sorry. I'm sorry the tear is appearing. But, I mean, this is, this is, this is a single family with, it's not that big. We have another one in here. Where's, lucky ledge, lucky ledge. Am I missing it? Yeah, yeah. Oh, it's further down. That's one. I'm sorry. It's much further down. So, you know, really, what we've got is, if we look at, at, here's Drew's Mills. Here's this, here's all those, those lots. You remember before we did the CMP stuff? We went back there, you know, as you know, the, the, this is gone. And there was another one. It's directly under the, well, this is gone, and there was another one that was out here up the power line. It's gone.
How far back is that from the new, from the 111? Is that a thousand feet?
Well, the, under the, this, under the map that, that was drawn as part of the comprehensive plan, you notice a thousand feet had nothing to do with it. This side goes all the way back to Bitterford Line. Because it makes no sense to go a thousand feet back and then start residential in the back there. There's no access to it. So it just made no sense to do that. That was convenient for purposes of planning to say, oh, it's a thousand feet, write it up and get that out of there. And it makes sense, because you, what you've got is, you've got gravel pit operation back in here, and you've got, there's development potential back in here. This is really where Phil does most of his active stuff, putting it down. But, I mean, he's got a good chunk of land back there. Now, great, there's, there's, there's good gravel, and then some places it gets ledgy. But not as bad as this side. And, you know, so there's, there's, there's developable land here. There's developable land. This whole area here has, has real developable land. This is developable too, but the thing is, frankly speaking, mobile home parks are cash cows. So unless some new use comes along that really wants that land, it pays a lot more. I mean, that's a, that's a cash flow that wants to right there. So it's most likely that will stay that way unless there's new pressure comes around that makes that not as valuable as something else. So what Jamie was saying is, yeah, we got two animals here. We got this one up here, which is all very small lots, simple, you know, the Agway. And primarily resident, mixed use, very mixed use. We have resident, we have residences that have been converted for business purposes. And then we get open land down here, and we're seeing this one, this, this one's gonna become a, a commercial use. Sorry, been bought for that purpose, and we convert it into a garage. But right now, the use is permitted. Some guys waiting for us to do something. And, you know, you know about these, this area in here. So there's a lot of, what was the name of this place? I keep forgetting. That was the bait shop, right?
Romeo's Den?
Yeah, Romeo's Den, thank you. That's Romeo's Den there. And that's actually fairly decent land, all about. It's about fourteen acres, as I recall. So if we're not gonna have subdivisions, then these are the areas that we have potential. And as you recall from, also, from doing the Kate's project, we have some good water supply. We have ledge, but we also have artesian water supply. We don't get into our problem with water quality until we get down to hell. And Bob, you still have, you have great water. So it is until we get down towards John's place, which is why you have spring fed.
I've got good water.
You have good water from a well?
No.
From, from up here?
No. You have a river? We have a pond. We, we filter out a pond.
Okay, so we have surface water, yeah. We have surface water, which is terrific, okay. So we have no utilities up here. The only thing we do have, and this is an advantage. We don't, we don't, we don't have water, we don't have sewer, but we have three phase.
Where's mine?
We do have three phase. We do have a street light here.
It is a street light in New Orleans.
So that's about it. And a really wet night, we'll have some arcing over here too, so. Otherwise, that's our district. So it's not monochromatic. It's very, it's very.
Twenty years from now?
Oh, no, no. No, it's there.
There's, there's a light there now.
Yeah, there's a light there now.
I'm gonna try to do it every day.
Not a traffic light.
Not a traffic light.
Not a traffic light.
Oh, wow.
No, no, no. It's a Cobra head.
I thought you said traffic light. No, no, they need one there.
Not gonna happen, I, I mean, they have to do this one first.
Hill Road?
Yeah, yeah, that's one.
No, that's, that's Limerick where they're talking about.
Oh, no, that's, that's, Hill Road.
Hill Road.
Hill Road. I'm sorry. Just going like, what the hell's that doing on that side of the road? That's Limerick, which needs it too. And that's a major, that's a town arterial. Which actually is, that's rated higher in traffic volume than this, believe it or not.
I believe it. I live right across from it.
It's all the tin turning traffic, that's right. Except for, yeah, that's the good thing, everybody coming out on New Road, not tempted with him, turning right. They're going right, yeah. Which always, and, and, and for some reason, the people on Old Alfred Road are always going left. So it's.
Right.
Yep. It's a nightmare there. Uh, so that gentleman is the issue. First of all, what are we gonna do with the boundaries through here? Because as you can see from the map, the complaint committee didn't really grapple with that. They said, let's go back here, and that makes sense. Down here, I mean, and when we get in here, a thousand feet's not gonna work. We do have to generate, we have to almost take it along the property lines along the road, along Route 111.
I don't see any other way.
The only, the only other place that could work would be putting this behind, there's a residence right next to Holly's. It's a, it's been on the market forever, it's a little, they can't sell it. But the land behind it, there's another lot behind it that's fairly big and that could be folded in, make that more attractive. But you really wanna get on that house, it's going for two seven, two, two forty, eight, two thirty.
That's why it isn't selling.
Well, I think it has more to do with, it's sort of Holly's. And the traffic though, 111 is just horrendous for that. A farm, I mean, we want that intrusion that far down into the residential district? Probably, probably just keep it as a, it goes all the way up to the road. I mean, there isn't access to the road. But, I mean, this is, this is a very nice residence, that's good residence, this is a good residential subdivision. We're in a residential area here that we want there, that has access down onto 111. On a lousy, lousy location. Well, probably be able to, it's about a hundred feet either side, come out that way. Uh, so, I mean, that's a problematic. So it looks like we have to pull it in up here, keep it all the way along through here and then just kinda like staccato it down through here. I don't think we want that many businesses on New Road. Do you think about it, really? Even though they're in the, in the CCN right now, it's. Not sure you'd be real popular if we decided you're gonna put in an office park. But they're so small, you're not putting in an office park. You'd convert a house into a, into a doctor's office or a dentist's office or something like that.
Yeah, like they did that one up on 111.
Exactly, the vacant one.
Is it vacant now?
It is vacant, yeah.
I don't think anything ever went in.
Oh, right there, not raised.
Yeah, there was, there was a doctor in there for a while.
Well, no, he owned it, I don't think he ever practiced there, it was just.
Well, he had the sign.
Taken care of.
Yeah, he shingled.
If I raised or?
In, in a rundle.
In a rundle, oh, okay.
So you're saying it was off premises, so you basically had a billboard up there. Because it was off premises, so it was interesting. And it is until we get to ledge clip, you know, down and through here, then we start getting into the land that we can do something with. And you know that, as we know, ledge clip is a tough piece of property too.
So we'll have to, we'll just have to look at it and say, what's the, what's the boundary line gonna look like?
Well, I think on this, once we got past New Road.
I think they'll try to blow up one, but.
It did, it did include, now it didn't include all that, it didn't go all the way behind though. Ledge, it didn't follow, take all of the ledge clip there. Probably should. Because why would you wanna take the back end of that? You remember the tough enough time, Phil had put in the commercial office.
Doesn't that, doesn't that come back out and around on New Road now?
There's a lot there that has access. Just, this is gonna go down. I think there's a lot that's shown that has access to the back portion. But as you recall, I don't think they ever blew through there as for emergency egress. And since they were proposing only six lots, they didn't have to. So none of them really have any real second-hand needs to egress. And it's here, Drew's Mills Road is a town road.
That's a town road.
That's a town road.
It's an ad shaped for a town road.
Yep, it is. I think it's a town road up to, I think, um.
Cross from where Kate's?
I think up to Phil's, up to the entrance to Phil's place is.
Okay.
So we got a mixed bag. We got, we basically have, we have an existing development pattern that's premature in there right now. Not a lot of redevelopment potential. And then we've got a lot of wide open land, where the land has development potential once we get past, um, Agway on one side and pass the trailer park on the other.
Could you get that laid out on a, a map where we could see the boundary lines? To be able to look at it?
Yeah, you want me to put a boundary line on this? I can reprint this without the contours, because we don't need it. Folden up the property lines so you can actually read them. And then put in a proposed boundary line.
Well, the only, the only proposed boundary line you need is on the south side, right?
That's it, really? Because the north side's pretty much.
Why split anything in the back?
That's right.
Let that go.
Rank that to the benefit line.
And then on the south side.
Yeah, just show us the property line so we can get an idea as to what it would look like.
We have subdivision, a lot of residential, one business, a lot of residential. We have one big business on the other side, is the mobile home park. Those kinda skew you a little bit and you're thinking of what can we, we.
Yeah.
On the northern side, I don't think that it's much of a problem, it's just.
It's that one little corner of things.
Sector at all post? Hold on.
I'd like, I, I don't feel comfortable even moving forward without finding out more from the resident property owners themselves. Because we could go horribly wrong and we get a lot of dispute over what we allow, unless we get them involved.
Well, I think that's, that's part of the issue. I think we need to define where that property line is gonna be. But I don't have a problem looking at, like, the permitted uses or the conditional uses because we wanna be able to present them with something and say, this is what we're thinking about.
And just pay for the entire district as, as shown? Or are we considering maybe that the residential area might be pulled out of that district?
You know, that's an interesting point.
I don't know if we could pull that, the residential district out.
I mean, I think those in the subdivision.
That subdivision's not gonna go away.
I don't, yeah, so it'll never be anything but what it is. And they probably don't want, say, Deuce, right across the street, you should put a hundred thousand square foot building there.
Yeah.
So if, if I lived there, my interest would be in not to have that right across the street. You know, so I think that we have those crosslets there.
But that, that hundred thousand, uh, square foot building would be conditional, would it not?
It's still a hundred thousand.
It's still permitted.
It's still permitted.
It's not, remember, conditional is the way it used to be, where, well, if it doesn't quite fit, we're not gonna allow it. It's, it's gotta be in conformance with the complaint. And the problem is, the way the complaint is written now, it's in, if you put a hundred thousand square foot building, it's in conformance. The way it's written now, because it says small, medium, large, non-residential uses. What you define as large, and I think that's one of the complaints, complaint committee was thinking of a hundred thousand, and that's why I put it in originally. You can scale it down to whatever. And I think the complaint committee has rethought what their definitions are for a small, medium, large. They vary, they aren't uniform. You know, small isn't always five thousand square feet, medium isn't always ten thousand. Depends on the context. Yeah, a hundred thousand, that's probably the size of the market basket.
Yes.
The market basket's about a hundred and twenty, actually.
Yeah.
I think Lowe's was one hundred and twenty.
Probably a hundred, yeah.
And on, on north side, I think that probably would be appropriate, but on, on the southern side, it'd be tough.
We could define it that way, we could write the ordinance to say that on the northern side of 111, you can put a hundred thousand square foot building. But on the southern side, guess what? Not so much.
Well, you, you could do that. To, to the new road.
Well, I think, yeah, you just sort of, you tweak that, that boundary to be inclusive of areas that you'd want it to, to be located in.
Yep.
I mean, what I, what I sort of envision up through there, and maybe it's not, you get up closer, you can see the property lines. But if you were to, to split the difference and come just back behind that subdivision, in between the subdivision and, and 111, have that be your boundary to allow some, some commercial development right along 111.
Yep.
Say it's at, I don't know, five hundred feet, just to split the difference. Uh, but, you know, working with the boundaries and come across and then transition down New Road to allow some commercial development right along that. Just by the nature of the, the area available between the. Between the big old. Between the road and the zoning, you're gonna, you're gonna uniquely restrict what you can do.
Well, that, that's part of the reason that I'd like to see what the boundaries look like, so we could more.
You can really start to define that.
Yeah, I, I like the idea of being able to say, well, on the northern side of that subdivision, maybe we could split that out, but we'd have to see the lines.
Sort of like sub-lots, or sub-districts.
Sub-districts, yeah.
No, no, what I'm, what I'm thinking is you, you run that line down, say at the, at the five hundred foot mark off of 111, south of 111. And then you transition that into what's, what's currently the CCN right along New Road.
Yeah.
Where's your marker? We're gonna do it right now.
We're already looking at doing that when we say on the northern side, it's all the way back to town road.
So I mean, say, say this is about where the, the district comes across now.
I'll use a shirt.
This is some back property lines, you know, you can come right up here, then come right on straight across. Sure. Here, you got the sharping. That's, that's Aquabean.
Well, that's the, this is the town road actually, right there. So you know.
Somewhere on the backside of these?
And you said this is the open space?
Yeah, so that's, that's out.
Yeah, so you've almost come across like that and then down to wherever, you know, it intersected this line up across.
Where?
Yeah. And come across, this one is the point, right there, that's the point.
And then the part that's cut off, then become part of.
I would just extend the R two and R one straight up to, to be.
That makes sense, because it already is in a sense of, you know, R one.
So and then whatever, the way you bet, where that R two, R one line came up tad, that split that one property on, that Alfred Road.
Yeah, this one.
Just however that line was coming up, just extend it up. This is the R one, right here. Yep. So that's the R one line over here. And it goes up.
Yeah.
So then we come down here like so, or we go straight across. This is a good piece, actually, I'd like to come down like this. And then we go, up that. So it's not that, it's not, it's not sawtoothed. We can make it sawtoothed if you want to.
No, I think that would, that would work well.
Because I think people right there along 111 understand that there's gonna be some business pressure. But if you only have that, that few hundred feet right there, you're gonna limit the size of a building. Right in that area.
Well, it's gonna, yeah, it's, the size of the building's gonna be determined by percentage of coverage. If you got a one acre lot in there, seventy percent, you're not gonna have a hundred thousand square foot building. Yeah, we could do that. That makes it a lot cleaner.
We could talk to some of the people in the New Road, as Tom says, I don't think we've lost any ground the more people we've involved in this process. Although we did have that, we just had the complaint committee did the, the R one district, talked to the neighbors in the R one, along Limerick Road between the Eastern Trail and where the new DV two district is on Limerick Road. So almost down to England acres or something like that. And so I invited, gave personal invitations to each one of the property owners on the, that's on the southwest side of Limerick Road. Excuse me, no, on the west side of Limerick Road. And one person shut up. That was it. So the discussion of, because the question was, do you want to be R one or R four? Recognizing, although we're convinced the planning, the, the planning, the complaint committee at the time, in big, in its terms, what we recognize now is we have a serious soils issue along Limerick Road. At least three hundred four hundred feet in, and it turns all into ravines and, you know, non-hurts and. It's my plan in, in, in high due soils. Unfortunately, the, the only way to make them show up is to have a town meeting and they show up and say they didn't know nothing about it. It, it's too bad, but it is good to reach out, to try to get them in here. Because I, I'm just, I'm only saying these things, trying to get them in, because that's when we go through all this work and we get nailed at town meeting from what, communicating well. Or for making a change, making a change that, that impacts their property value, which they're always notified of at our final public hearing, right? Because we notify all the property owners by law.
Yeah.
Who are in the affected district this way, which we'll still have to do, quite frankly. But at least, at least we get their input ahead of time. So I mean, I can advertise that for the next week, next time we have a brick and浆. A workshop in English will be the twenty-nine, if I can do that. Give me at least two weeks. So if you haven't known this, that one, I'm actually, I'd rather not give them one or two days.
Will we be here or at the, the school?
I haven't gotten response back from the school, because, you know, frankly speaking, as you know, we're scheduled up through the year, doesn't still keep us from getting kicked out. But if necessary, yeah. And not talking about a huge number, I mean, we might have to have it here, but we're not talking about a huge number of people.
Right.
Considering our track record the last time.
My, my only concern is that the one day that we have a meeting here, thirty-seven people show up.
Yeah.
Right.
Sort of, sort of like the, the bad is public hearing. I was planning for a night that we're gonna be at the school.
Then it would be, well, that's not enough time for next week.
Well, two weeks after, do it, do it in three weeks after.
But that gives us time. You wanna wait that long, because we, we still have a lot of stuff to do.
Well, we could go through this, considering the, the part that was, is north and also west there, we could.
Yeah, we can, we can.
We can have that to share with them.
Right, yeah, yeah.
And that's, that, yeah, that would be a good idea.
This is our proposal.
Yeah, for, for that.
But with that line.
Oh, yeah, but I'm gonna do it neither than with this, because this thing's the size of the entire CNP.
Okay, so well, let's, let's go back and look at the, the permitted uses and stuff. And in the meantime, glad you can get us that map, I'm gonna start notifying everybody.
Glad we filled those maps out. So other than the Marina.
Yeah, we've got a can there.
You know, we can draw Marina, I mean, you know, some of this stuff is, remember, this is up to you guys to start doing things out there. Superficial Marina, I think is, is a remnant from the shore zone.
Yeah.
To make it out. Take that out.
Yeah, so I had a question, number thirty-four, recreational facility on the passive?
Yeah.
Passive.
We don't have a definition that I can find for that.
I think we had a proposed one. That was, that was, yeah, we have a proposed one.
And so, and what would that include?
That's, that's basically government parks or something like, uh, Audubon Park, Government Park. It's basically passive recreation, meaning. In other words, it's, 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 there's no real, uh, it's not a commercial operation to a standpoint of had on amusements.
So would that, would that be covered under municipal uses?
It's just that, yes, it would, the issue is.
It's just that, yes, it would, the issue is sometimes people do that kind of recreational facility for, is that associated with municipal, like Audubon, frankly speaking?
Oh, okay. Yeah, we just have to make sure we get the definition.
But it doesn't exclude things like motor, motorized vehicles or anything like that.
I think it does. I think that's an commercial recreational.
Yeah, John, in a, in a, older, one, almost a year ago, there was a definition, recreational facility passive, facility is not operated for profit and is open to the general public, including not limited to playgrounds, parks, monuments, green strips, open space, mini parks, athletic fields, boat lawn tramps, piers, docks, picnic grounds, swimming pools, wildlife, nature preserves, but not including campgrounds or commercial recreational facilities.
Still doesn't exclude motorized sports.
It's a, it does to the extent that you're not gonna operate a, a motorized sport in a nonprofit.
Why not?
But we also have a definition for powered sports facility.
Yeah, but this, what I'm saying is that it doesn't exclude, like, taking ATVs through there, or whatever.
No, it doesn't, maybe. I would, I would agree with John.
Maybe we should add an exclusion in there.
If that's what you want, but, you know, I, because we have these, these nice little phrases, but I gotta remember that there's gotta be some real meaning behind it. And, you know, does it, does it say what we mean? So when you say, uh, permitted use is passive recreational facility, what do you mean by that? And does what we mean by that fit the definition?
I would assume that you want non-motorized in that kind of category, would you agree, John?
I'll make definition, I think.
Well, yeah, definition, but then non-motorized, what about wheelchairs and scooters and things like that, you know? You can't take those through?
We're talking about the facility that's being built. What is the facility intended to do? So a facility in this thing would be like the ranger's station, letting them come onto the park area. You're looking at the, the facility for the build.
You mean the park itself is not a facility?
The park, the park itself would be a facility, but the fact that I'm in a wheelchair and I come to that facility does not eliminate the ability to have that facility there.
No, 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 I'm saying, the passive part.
That's fine.
The passive part, if we're saying non-motorized, I don't know that we mean that.
It's non-motorized from the point of view of
Recreation.
Recreational activity that the facility is providing, not the fact that somebody comes in a motorized wheelchair.
Or a car.
Or a car, because they gotta have a place to park. So they're gonna, they're gonna drive onto the facility, they're just not gonna be driving down the roads in the facility.
It's not gonna be designed and set up for
ATV tracks, go-kart track, and motocross, dirt bike, none of those.
ATV trails.
Well, let's remember that we do have a definition, we have, we do have a definition for what John's talking about, and it's called power sports.
Right, power sports amusements.
Yeah, and what's the definition for that?
Uh, I'll have to look it up.
He did write that.
He did that as part of townhouse.
It's excluded under any circumstance, because even the conditional use says that you can have recreational facilities commercial, excluding power sports.
Yeah, but we don't, I don't remember.
We, we have a definition.
I don't remember.
We have a definition of that.
And are we really going to exclude power sports?
No, and again, to these things.
I'm not, I'm not a big fan of the power sports sites, but I don't think there's a better spot in the whole town than up behind Laby's area for, for something like that.
Okay, let me ask you this one little question. Do you think they bring in terms of taxes?
Yeah, that's a very good point.
That's a good point, yeah. Not much, just a little ticket pool.
Little less than a campground?
About the same amount as a graveyard.
A little less than a campground.
Same tax rush as a graveyard.
Does that have to say that they don't serve the purpose that the issue is? It was one of them. Right, having the fact that it's like a
Do you have a question from the audience?
Oh, yes.
What if in that area, Abbott's wanted to open up another facility, big building, what would happen then?
Nothing, he'd be allowed to open, because the commercial sales aspect would be allowed. He would not be allowed to, to open up an entertainment facility where he would be leading tours of snowmobiles or, or ATVs or anything like that, those facilities.
We could sell them.
He could sell them, he just can't.
You have to test ride them sometimes an hour at a time, in a group.
Yep.
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be, well, in a group?
Well, no, because when you, when you buy, when you buy an ATV, they're supposed to take you out and make sure you know how to ride it for the sake.
Right. But wouldn't that be ancillary to the sales portion of it versus a primary use being, you know?
An event.
An event or?
Right. And I think that's where the, the difference would come.
Oh, and I got my ATV at friend and friend, they didn't let me drive it anywhere.
Because you wreck them.
That's right. They know me.
Just take it and go away.
All right, well, anyway, to get back to, you know, where we were on the front page of passive, I mean, everybody's comfortable with our passive definition?
I'm comfortable with it.
Is, what's the reason for the passive part? Is it just because of noise? Because you've got, you know, electric-type vehicles, so don't make any noise? So why are you saying, why are we saying passive? What is, what's the point? What's the reason?
Because it's separate from, uh, commercial. It's a different use.
Well, no, then you, then you would just say non-commercial.
Well, that's because that's the definition we have for that kind of facility.
What else?
We have commercial, so here's powered sports facility, here's our definition of a power sports facility that we came up with on April 17th, 2014. A commercial recreational facility which attracts course or other accommodations and provides for use of power sports vehicles such as ATVs, motorcycles, go-karts, dirt bikes, and other motorized vehicles operated by a driver.
So any motorized vehicle, regardless of what kind of motor we're talking about?
Powered sports.
Yeah.
Yeah, that didn't have to be sure electric.
Use of powered sports vehicles.
Okay.
Power sports vehicles.
But if, if then, if, if number 34, the passive recreational simply means non-commercial, that means you can have a go-kart track, or you can have a dirt bike track, long as it's not commercial.
No, including more than non-commercial. Whole list of types of uses. What John's saying is if you were to exclude power sports, then exclude it.
Yeah, just write it down, yeah, as an exclusion.
I think that's the intent of it. Remember also, this is exempt, this is also a many uses, it doesn't say you can have power sports, you can't have it.
All right.
So commercial, you'd wanna say including power sports.
Except that we specifically said that it excludes power sports under, under the conditional use.
Yeah. But, yeah. Because that was really necessary.
And it may prove to be necessary to stick it on here, but we'll have to find out. It may very well say, no, we don't want motorized sports, and so, okay, we can put it in there.
I think if, if it was in the definition of passive, then I think it would clarify, John, I think, I hear what you're saying, John, it, it doesn't really say you can't have a motorized vehicle, or, it may be, maybe the definition needs to say that, if that's what we mean.
I know that.
And that does not exclude just private snowmobiles going through there.
That's powered sports.
Because there's lots of them through there.
You're right, it's, it's a private situation where they happen to be cutting across the property, so it would not be excluded. It would be excluded if they wanted to set it up to do that.
And in fact, you know, we, we had sort of a private ATV course on Old Alfred Road, which we had to address, from a reinforcement standpoint, because it's such a nuisance, that we wrote the ATV, the power sports ordinance, which never got sold away today, because maybe one of the inched. But we did like that, because we can have situations, we do have a private track. Homeowners do, in fact, can put a private track in the backyard, they have the real space.
Yep.
And drive their name to screen.
They can.
Bingo. And that's, there's huge problem along Alfred Road.
So I think, are the, by adding the, the exclusion to powered vehicles to 34, or to the definition, for passive, I think, I think that would solve the problem. I'm not sure what John thinks.
I'm just trying to clarify, I'm
Oh, yeah, no, I understand that.
I'm not necessarily advocating one side or the other, I just wanna be clear that we're saying what we mean to say.
Right, but if, by putting the definition into passive and, and commenting that we are excluding motorized vehicles, that, that would, that would clarify that this means you want to put them up there.
Excluding power sports.
Power sports.
Right. I exclude motorized, because motorized vehicles
Well, I know, I want to throw a rank and roll, but if you're gonna exclude power sports there, if we go to the conditional uses, 12, under 12, recreational facilities, commercial, that is excluding power.
But that works.
That's all right, though, right.
But that's, but that's the difference, our definition of passive is nonprofit. Commercial is by definition a profit-making scenario. So we're saying you can have a nonprofit which is passive, or you can have a profit which is conditional.
No, but even there, you still
But it excludes power sports.
Right, it's still excluding the power
But you can have miniature golf, tennis courts, indoor sports facility.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Tennis court, too.
Right.
Yeah, so you could get Howard Sports to come out and put up another facility, and that would be
Right.
Commercial.
You couldn't do bumper cars, because they're powered.
That's right.
They're not powered sports.
Yes, they are.
Bumper cars?
I would say they don't have any definition of power sports.
How not?
Because that, that's a specific definition, power sports. Power sports is a definition for type of vehicle, a power sports vehicle. Sport vehicle is determined, refers to snowmobiles, ATVs, UTVs, go-karts, dirt bikes. If you go, if you go
Where's the line, what's not a power, and what is a power sports vehicle?
Let's go to coattiers, okay? Coattiers will shock you, exactly what it is. But that's what the definition of a power sports vehicle is. If you look it up, in, in common parlance, a power sports vehicle is, is, includes its category of different uses, it's like a muscle car. You said muscle car, everybody here knows what a muscle car is. Is a Barracuda muscle car?
That's because we're all old.
No.
Exactly, I'm just using that because I'm playing to my audience.
If there were a couple of millennials here, you'd say, Barracuda, they'd go, what's that?
Fish.
What is that?
All right, a fish. Yeah. You know, we, we all make these assumptions that we know what we're talking about, but
We can, we can put the definition of powered sports vehicle into our definition.
It is, it is.
It is, okay, then, then everybody knows what we're talking about. So there's no reason particularly down that road, because we've defined what it is.
So the question is, do we want power sports vehicles in recreational facilities in this area?
No.
I guarantee you, it's gonna be on the, the
Power sports on the power line.
They already are there.
They are, but they're not legally there.
Power line, power sports, I can see it now.
We're not supposed to be out on the power line. We don't have a legal right to be there.
Well, and we don't, we don't have a, we don't have the authority as a planning board to authorize that.
No, we don't.
They're doing that.
And besides, the boundary, the boundary of the district goes up to the eastern edge of that.
No, it's in the western side.
Yes, the western.
What you read said the western side.
Yeah, it did.
But it should say, well.
I, no, it shouldn't, it should include
We have no jurisdiction over the
Right. It should go right up to it.
It should say the eastern side, should say the eastern side. I don't want to get CFP. What, what do you, how do you feel about recording studios or radio stations?
It's a
It's a perfect spot for a radio station, actually.
Yeah, right.
Right up top of Phil's pile.
It would be a great
Highest spot.
Just ask it.
Yeah.
You know, we never discussed the whole issue of antennas.
Thirty-two. Yeah, he doesn't want an antenna, but, you know, that's a great place for a cell tower or a radio station.
Cell towers got their own overlay district?
Yep.
Okay, so
And they're not necessary.
We got it all, but they should be, that's a spot for one. That's, that, that's for another topic.
Definitely, yeah. Other than that, on this first page, under the permitted uses, is there anything else that we want to look at?
So Anything that shouldn't be in there?
I'm confused, didn't we, didn't we write a regulation a few years ago about wind mills and all of that being allowed in all of the districts, and then we get them in size?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
So do we have to, with this new exclusion, if it's not listed, it's excluded, do we need to include that?
Good point, because this, that particular location was a prime wind location, and it was, it would allow for the largest wind towers, as we had written it.
But we don't, we, we never set anything up for, for power generation. You're not gonna have a wind farm up there.
Well, if we want to allow it, it wouldn't have to be a farm, but you could certainly generate a lot of power, you could do net metering for a bunch of places.
And, and as, as residential homes, they'd be allowed to do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you could put up
They'd be, they'd be allowed to
You could put up one big turbine, and you could feed, you know, up to 10 meters from there.
That's a commercial use, aren't they?
Yeah, that's, that's the way they do
So that becomes a question.
Net metering now, that's the way they do it.
That would be a question, there would be a lot of that.
If it was being done on purpose.
That would be a utility which is included in a conditional use.
The other thing to do in, in reference to that would be define what would be allowed in that district, in terms of wind generation individual.
Well, see, on my recollection, it isn't totally, totally there, I don't remember if we ended up restricting it to only new residences or residences versus
Could be by height. Can look it up, right now.
No, we didn't restrict it to new residents.
No.
No, 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 no.
We didn't restrict it to residents.
I think we did restrict it by height.
It was, yeah.
We had a height, we had a height limitation.
Distance of property lines.
Yeah, based on, on, right, distance.
Yeah, but I don't
What do you mean by business?
Commercial.
Commercial. Well, sure, because we, we do it with solar, you put it on a commercial facility, so what's the difference?
Well, I don't think
I thought it was any type
I think we just did it by height.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we did, I think, I thought it's that we're gonna be excluding all of this stuff that is not listed, we may have to visit every one of our
Right, it better be in there, but this is a list of exclusive for
My thought, and, and I don't, probably don't remember correctly, but I thought it was townwide, based on the height of, of what we were putting up, and it was permitted anywhere we wanted to develop.
And if it could be a commercial enterprise, I think it's covered under utilities here.
The height was
If, if it's commercial, yeah.
The height was dependent upon the setback you could get.
From the property, yeah.
It's got their
That buried something a little something.
It, it had to come down, it couldn't come down within like, 10 or 15 feet of the property limits, it fell over.
Yes.
The height, yeah.
Yeah.[1746.78]
It had to be further back than the land than the.
Correct.
The tower could come down and land and.
At any rate, to Bob's point, it, it probably should be in here, right Ted? And a lot of districts as well.
Well, it all depends on, yeah, what, how it's set up in the ordinance.
When do we do that? Would that approve?
Oh yeah, that was a while.
It was a long time. This was before I came.
Right, and.
I thought it was any property.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't even have to be put in here.
No, we wouldn't have, I don't think we'd have to list it because I thought we were gonna put it in any case in town.
I'll throw light on it. This is a list of permitted uses, remember? If you don't list them, you don't.
It's like, it's like a basketball pole in driveway. We don't have that in there either. It's just, it's a right of any property. The way I.
I don't know.
That's the question.
Covered under utilities.
So nobody has their ordinance here, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Why not?
Utilities, certainly the cell.
That's what you were talking about.
So where do you think that would be under?
That's not, that's not, that's not metering, that's not a utility. That's done, if you have solar and you generate more than you can use. You could do net metering to, as many as ten meters.
What, what section?
Page twenty-one.
Page twenty-one.
Right.
Considered a utility. No, I'm with you.
I'm with you. That's not what we're talking about.
Small wind energy conversion, medium wind. Wind energy conversion system, driven in town.
We would have to make sure that this is.
Okay, the site can be publicly or privately owned, it may include adjacent lots.
You see, combined.
Which line does that?
It's right on the.
Appicability?
Yeah. It should be. Appicability. Where did you put it?
Oh, there it is, the site, right there.
See, and then we broke them down to what size they were. A small wind energy conversion system may not have a radiant capacity of more than ten kilowatts. So it was by height.
And we also had the height of the tower, so it was.
And then a medium was a hundred kilowatts. So let's look at wind, let's go to our, let's go to our chart. Say on that one, the lodge.
Where does it say it's approved throughout the town?
It may not.
Yeah, I don't think it does, that's my point.
Here's the kicker, gentlemen, it's not permitted. Any of the, in the chart of uses, it's not even listed.
Well, that's my point.
It's my point. What the heck? Why isn't that listed?
Well, before, it wasn't, if it wasn't there, it didn't even permit it. I mean, it wasn't, if it was.
Just because it wasn't listed, it didn't mean you couldn't do it if we had the definition what it was and was not.
No, because remember, it says the code enforcement officer can fit any use in where it is appropriate in that chart. So you find me something in that chart, it's appropriate, it's close to wind energy. Which is a problem.
Well, this might be a good catch. I, I think we should, we need to allow it.
I think we need to allow it everywhere.
Everywhere, I think. And I think the definition.
Yeah, you might want it everywhere.
Everywhere.
You want a wind farm on top of that.
No, we, different sizes.
We've restricted the sizes of all of that stuff.
Yeah, well, I'm looking at the restriction of the size, it's a hundred kilowatts, that's not a small.
Well, that can be conditional in certain districts, but the small ones, the small ones should be allowed everywhere.
Provided you can have the setback.
Right.
Design requirement, that's who we are. If you can meet it. Now, this is, this is an estate one, I think.
What's that?
This might just be taken from the state.
Yeah, but then we also have wind energy conversions, it shall be permanently used to produce electric power for onsite consumption.
Oh.
There it goes.
It goes commercial.
Yep.
On-site consumption. You're gonna feed it back, you're gonna feed it back into the grid.
That's the way, that's the way CFP does it, so it just, you're not gonna run wires out.
Right, and it, but it was, it was our intent.
All you do is register the meters that are gonna be running off your system.
That's a, that's a dumb. You know, you could put up a huge tower and it's for onsite consumption because I'm feeding it back into the grid here. Oh, I don't, you don't use five hundred kilowatts, do you?
No, but the rest of my nine users do altogether.
On-site users?
Net metering right now.
You can't do net metering. It's onsite use only. You're gonna, your excess is gonna go back into the grid.
It's onsite consumption.
If it's onsite consumption, you can't net meter it.
Right, yeah.
It's not gonna be allowed.
Not the way this is written.
The way that's written is.
CFP does it that way.
It's irrelevant who's gonna know. The ordinance says it's onsite, and that's what we focus on.
Well, it says it's primarily for onsite consumption. So you size it for your system. If you have excess, you can sell it back.
You can sell it back, that's correct.
Well, the other thing too is, no disruptive electromagnetic interference. If you get too big, you're gonna have that, your next neighbor is gonna complain that you got electromagnetic.
If Phil on that wonderful site there puts up a hundred and sixty foot tower, nobody would know the difference, so he could see it and rate a hell of a lot of it.
And nobody would complain.
But that can be in the conditional list.
That's the utility, conditional utilities that he'd be looking at then. Because he would be selling it.
He's not a utility.
It would be generating a hundred and sixty kilowatt hours.
But that's what you would, that's what you would use every day to have it come before the board. Yeah, if he's producing how much, then you have to sell it. That sounds like a utility.
Right.
Well, how about if he puts it up there and all the energy comes out to the trailer park?
That he's selling.
No, you could only go to ten meters before you're commercial. So if there, if we had a business, let's say Agway for instance, let's say they really did a lot of, they started doing indoor lighted type growing, where they're using a lot of electricity, you could feed that, that would be one meter. If there were a couple of other businesses that use a lot of electricity, could feed that up to ten total.
But not under our ordinance. Under our ordinance, it is onsite consumption.
I know, but that needs to be changed, because that doesn't make any sense.
No, we went through that whole decision, no it doesn't.
We spent, we spent five months doing this, John.
It is onsite, we do not need to change that.
There doesn't say onsite anyway. Because I don't remember.
I do think we need to put that throughout the entire ordinance, so that everybody can do it, but I see no reason.
Under design requirements.
To allow somebody to, to do net, this ten net thing that John is talking about. Just my opinion.
Under design requirements. James, if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We have twenty minutes left here. Yes, we never made a promise to the chief, we, we gotta keep the promises before now. We're in home accord with that.
At five minutes and nine, I was planning on calling the meeting.
Just wanted to remind you.
Okay, so.
But I think it was, it was a good pick-up to say, what are we gonna do about windmills?
Yeah, it could be a problem.
Yeah, I could. Is there anything else in the permitted uses that we're looking at? That is not there or that we think should be there? I think we've done, I think it's a pretty good list.
And the question is, does it fit with?
Well, it depends on the area. See, that's, that's gonna be the problem.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously theaters and movie theaters aren't gonna work really well.
Well, and that's where I think the key is to reshape it a little bit, because that's gonna. I have a question about taverns being a conditional use rather than permitted net area. What was the reason for that?
I think that with the exception of DB one, they're conditional everywhere, aren't they?
Really?
I agree. Now, DB one, they're conditional, they're conditional everywhere.
Okay.
Remember, tavern is a straight drinking spot.
Under those.
Okay, that's right. I shouldn't say straight, but who dis secretary to the service of alcohol and beverages?
The one question I have is under permitted uses thirty-five, we have residential, it's limited to the one and then any subsequent divisions. Number thirteen says residential to include single family. I think that's gotta get out of there.
Oh, third, conditional use?
Yes.
Okay.
Conditional use thirteen. So two-family and multifamily are conditional uses, provided that a minimum thirty-five percent.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying?
We have to take the, to include single family one.
Right.
And two, you know, that's a duplex, that's a single. So multifamily provided that.
Thirty-five percent, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So which will be changed?
Number thirteen, residential, multifamily, provided that a minimum thirty-five percent of the partial use for commercial or non-residential.
You're saying that because?
I have no idea. I don't know who put this in here, but that.
It's always been there.
Well, that was because we're.
Because on thirteen, we're permitting the single family. And, and, and that goes to the duplex and everything else.
Sounds good.
That's just my suggestion.
I think that makes sense. Oh, it also refers back to table seven four two.
Right.
That's where it comes from.
So we did the density bonus in the DB two.
Which is the reference?
Oh, I thought we got, where did the net go? And the other one?
I thought we got away with density bonuses.
You could get rid of density bonuses if you wanted, but this is, remember, I took DB two and put it right in here. See what would fit more, because basically this is closer to DB two than it is to DB one.
You know, I just, I didn't remember having left density bonuses in DB two. I thought we had taken it out.
No, because that was, that was, that was the argument we, if you recall, we went through a lot of complaints when they said.
Well, I may have lost that argument.
I think you did. You and I both, I guess.
Okay, but other than that, with the permitted and conditional uses.
Yeah.
Does that look good?
Yeah. Isn't it the table seven four three?
Yeah.
The third column residential uses. And it did, it's referring to section seven four one three two. And then seven four two eleven, and those are the. I don't see how they.
That has to get adjusted.
Yeah.
Because that's, it's referencing something that's not.
Something that we've moved to, to change.
Okay.
Where is this?
Down here, it references seven four one.
Oh, yeah, thirty-two.
Seven four one thirty-two and seven.
Also, the issue is, I mean, we're penalizing residential uses in this district, like now they're one acre. We're penalizing, we're going up to two acres.
Do we want to penalize them?
No, no, I don't think we should.
Well, let's ask this fundamental question. Basically, what the complaint committee says is this is in the residential zone.
Right.
I, I guess it's debatable as to whether, I don't think that's what the complaint said. I think the complaint said they wanted all of it.
What, what?
They wanted it mixed.
No, it said, it said no residential subdivisions.
Yes, no residential subdivisions. That's different than a single residential lot.
No, what it means is that the only way you can create a lot for a single-family residential is you can only divide that lot off one every five years, or else it's only a family division, which means that it cannot go out of the family for five years. Now, those lots that are created, that's, that's what the exemption from the subdivision ordinance says. So it's a real curtailment of any kind of residential subdivision in that area.
Okay, but the difference between one acre and two acre, our focus in all of the other areas was to either give them more options for building by reducing the setbacks, having the smaller acre requirements, et cetera. So this one we're penalizing, going from one acre to two acre minimum?
Only for residential.
No, we're discouraging residential use in this area. That's what you're doing.
I don't know if, if the complaint is necessarily discouraging residential use, they just don't want subdivisions.
That's residential use.
That's residential use.
No, but to split one off, it's still, why penalize that new split off?
And the other, and the other part that the complaint did say, because I agree with Tom, is that if an individual has a lot and his intent was to split it up, well, what happened if he only got three acres and he's got two kids?
And he's screwed, yeah.
Well, you know, and that was, that was his plan. Why penalize him, you know? I, I mean, it's only three acres. In twelve years, you're gonna end up with a third one, you know, who's gonna, he's not gonna split off the other one, the town's not gonna benefit from it by not doing it. I mean, if there was a true benefit to the town.
What you have is a mixed message here, gentlemen, because what the complaint committee is saying is, we're gonna let, and, 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 there is a certain danger to this, by the way, from a legal standpoint. What you're saying is that people who have existing property, who wanna split off their lots for their kids can do something. That's what makes this mixed use. It's mixed use now in one half of this district, just because that's the way it's developed. It is a mixed use district on the eastern side. The western side, not so much, except when you get up.
Can't help.
But, but, but the point is that a subdivision, the way the subdivisions, what it's looking at is future development. It's gonna be severely curtailed unless it's done for family divisions only. It's gonna be very curtailed. Because they're saying no subdivisions. I don't. I agree with you, I know, I agree with you that if it's a family piece of property, he's got just so much, lots of buy-in, like, he should be able to do that. Yeah, does it, allows it.
But if you have a two acre minimum.
Yeah, no subdivision is, I think we're all right with that, but, but for that family owner, if they wanna have the one acre, why not let them? That's.
Fine, I mean, you know, remember, this is from DB two. I mean, if you don't want this element of DB two here, it's terrific, great. How many, how many lots are we talking about out there? Family lot, well, any property that's owned by an individual can be put up in a lot.
So once these things are gonna be able to go commercial, Ash, I'm sure they'll go commercial, but the intent is to protect those homeowners right now, I think. Because what you had planned, that if they owned it, that was their intent. Well, if, I mean, I don't know, I don't know the people's land in that area, but if their intent was to split out their things for their family and they only had five acres, they wanted to make a Z through them, you know?
Yeah, for the rare case, why not?
Yeah, it's rare.
Because I was asking, how many lots are we talking? We're not talking a lot out there.
I just assumed, see, that lot size would be one acre.
Right. One acre and DB.
One acre and DB.
Yep. Yeah. You'd have to make a difference anyway.
And what about the maximum building coverage? That stays at forty or that has to be adjusted as well?
What do we have in?
I mean, what are, what are people's thoughts on the size?
Well, residential, we're not limiting the building footprint.
Oh.
Well, at least here it says an A.
But you, but you, well, we're not saying that there's a maximum size, but if you've got a maximum building coverage, by definition, you have a maximum size. Because, because an acre is what, forty thousand square feet?
So that'd be about sixteen hundred square foot.
Sixteen thousand square feet, at forty percent. Heck of a big building.
That's a big, that's a big house.
That's a big house. That's the footprint, never mind how high up you're going.
That's right.
I, I, I don't have a problem with it. If you wanna, if you wanna build a sixteen thousand square.
If you wanna put it in these terms, we have, we have, in the R one district, we have our one acres on a lot, we have a twenty percent coverage right there. It's doubled, you know, the coverage. So we're encouraging mansions in the area when everybody's doing a lot, okay?
I wanna watch somebody put one up.
Maybe it needs to be adjusted.
Estate, excuse me.
The Kinder and Estate.
Where was they?
He could have paid the taxes when he put it up.
Where was that twenty percent at?
We're gonna say the R one.
R one, which is right there, right?
Yeah.
So we might as well make it compatible.
New Road is all one acre.
I got no problem making it compatible and saying it's a twenty percent use.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, yeah.
It's still a honking house.
I would like.
Usually ten percent.
Most people put about a half, so.
That being said, we've got a couple of minutes left. I'm looking at a hundred thousand square foot building footprint, and I just think that's like way too big.
But that should be on the north side.
Okay. Yeah, we could, we could do that, we could say.
Or, or you could just say west of New Road, it's a hundred thousand, and east of, you know, both the north and the south and east.
Yeah, it makes, makes more sense to say east of West of New Road.
Yeah, right.
When you look at it.
Well, north of one eleven and west of New Road.
Not even north, because if you look on the southern side, it still has lots of open land there.
You go for a hundred thousand square foot building on the south side of New, of one eleven, that's a big friggin' building. I mean, that's.
Look at all the waste that's there.
The land would work.
So this, this is the west.
Yeah. Yeah, and that would be fine.
To the west, to the north.
And, oh, you're west.
West of New Road.
And they're taking that.
We're gonna have to be a little more specific than that.
Yeah, I just, I can't see a.
So west of New Road to the power line?
For the 100,000.
No, because, because all of that would be west of New Road.
Somebody's saying, if you just say north of 111, we're excluding the south side west of the New Road.
Yeah, what about if that way you want to, if the God Center want to expand?
Well, and that's why, couldn't you, couldn't you just say in any of the area north of 111, and only in areas south of 111 that are west of New Road?
Is it really relevant? You're not gonna put 100,000 square foot building.
I don't think, and that's, and that's where I think with doing that, we, we limit the potential for a lot of those kind of ramifications.
So what type of businesses are we expecting or trying to attract with 100,000 square feet? Of shopping, retail, or?
What should we get? Is 100,000 square feet, this is market value right there. Typical, typical Hannaford, which we aren't gonna get here, but typical Hannaford is about 54,000. At least the ones that go there.
So, and that's.
That gives you an idea of the size.
Is, is 100 appropriate? Should we, you know, look at 75?
Actually, you know, building size, you determine, I mean, the, the reason why we get building size originally was we wanted to scale down on
Right.
the, the mass of buildings. Square, you know, coverage will, will make a lot of determination on the building size.
Lot size and coverage is gonna do that. 70%, but you got 14 acre site there, you do 70%, you easily, you easily put in 100,000 square foot.
So will this come with design standards as well?
You guys.
Oh, yeah, we'll have to be careful.
It's up to you.
That being said, I think we need to cease discussion on this, because we have some minutes that we need to.
Okay. I, I looked at, see one minor change, that was on page 2 of 4. At the very bottom, just a little type of error, it says, a butter's can call a cell, call it white sore, the assistant price manager should, I think it's white. Whites comma four. You see that, they just fit. Other than that, look great.
Discussion, yeah. Well, you have to still do an official vote, I think.
Oh, yeah, we still have to have.
Did you have a second on it?
No, we haven't even had a motion yet.
I forgot whether you got that. Oh, that's right, yeah, never got that.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve that with the other, in page 4, that was already backed up.
Which meeting was this in? This was November, November 18?
Yeah.
It wasn't attached, right? I'll second.
November 13.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I'm looking for the 18th.
Yeah, 18th was the one we had back here.
Have a motion, have a second.
Great, motion's been made, motion's been seconded. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
And the free of extension.
Free of extensions.
Motion.
Motion passes. And next, entertain a motion to adjourn.
What's the name of the report?
Oh.
Per agenda.
Per the agenda, plan is repaid.
Uh.
No update, then, sorry.
Okay, update, okay, here's the update. I have, they have transferred the $245,000 into the account for, for the.
Seasonal charges.
They still need the silent document form. I probably say I'm done with that, at least they put the money in the bank. And I've notified them that they really need to get that form finished, as I asked them to do it, it's due, I said, we'll do it by last minute. So I still don't have all that paperwork there. Other things that are occurring right now, I, I think I sent you all the notice with a site, we have a minor site plan revision, or a site plan project that the staff of the committee is gonna be here next week, which is gonna be the addition of 30,000 gallon propane tank over on the plant for fuel, we're gonna be on that site. That, that qualifies because of the footprint. It's under the 2,500 square feet, so it's, it's well under 1,000, 100,000 square feet. That's basically, the fire department's gonna be jumping all over that, and, and very honestly, we've had meetings with them prior to their submission of this, so they know exactly what they have to do, and they have their hydrant and access points, and we're gonna have some landscaping too. That's, that's coming up. I've talked to the guys at AIM, they say they're going to have, their DEP permit is ready, but I still don't have anything from them. They keep going to a shady, there's a new project manager that serves every month, and I have a new one now, which I have to brief, and what things to do. I also have.
Project manager from AIM?
From AIM, yeah. It's been a lot of personal, personal turnover there. And I warned you, I said, in our, in our BI district that we're proposing for June, auto graveyard's are going to be eliminated from the BI district, and so chop, chop, get going. You know, they're permitted right now, but the board quit getting rid of them, like the last, what, two years ago, when we did that. We wanted to get rid of them, because they really weren't producing much revenue from town, and, and so I told them, you better get going, guys here. I know you're under substantial review right now, but not for substantial review, if you get your revisions in to us, but, you know, let's get going. I also have a rejuvenation of a subdivision, and we remember Arundel Keep.
Refresh my memory?
Keep, Arundel's Keep, yep.
No.
Subdivision 2005, which is why I don't remember.
I can't remember what happened to breakfast a little now.
Where, where was it?
It was on Irving Road, right across from Paul Madro's place.
There's.
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
You really put it through the ringer.
I didn't, it's been town, hadn't.
We had lots of geo, hydro geo studies done by Lesby, and rather extensive work, and they apparently have been bought out by somebody and they're, they're looking to, to bring that back, and I told them, well, guess what, you don't have a subdivision. So by our rules, you didn't start in two years, so you weren't completed in two years, so you can start all over again, you wanna bring the same stuff back in, terrific. You know, we'll, we'll review it, and if they don't find it's, it looks like it's pretty thorough, but the only problem is the engineer is no longer in business, so there's no problem with bringing in somebody else's.
It was really, it was small, was it? Five, six lots?
It was six lots, it was a cluster division.
Yeah.
It's a small one, but it's the first residential subdivision that has been considered in, what, the last four years, five years? I remember Jimmy Jones eliminated his approved subdivision, because he don't wanna pay taxes, and he was thinking it was, he marked it was coming taxes. So we have our first residential subdivision that will be coming probably February or March, it all depends. So that's, that's going well. I have an application from DuBois for renewal of a permit, and I thought I'd met with the town attorney on that. And the application is incomplete, I have to send him some letter, some information.
It's just for composting operations.
It's for composting operations.
Back at the original level, where it's supposed to be.
It does not say, that's one of the things that, that's incomplete, it doesn't have maps, it doesn't have, it's a renewal of, of an existing permit, that existing permit, as you recall, is 5,000 tons. So there's a lot of information that's missing in the town, so basically, we ask them to report a full application. And as you may recall, one of the things that was part of your original permit was that a warning, a notification that at the next renewal, they will have to provide you a full survey. The last time it was just a USDA sketch based on some old.
GPS one.
Well, no, they did some GPSing, but it was very limited in modern GPS, so you, you folks had made a requirement for a complete survey. And so I don't have that data, I don't have any, except for the requests, and I'm not, that they, that we do. And it's like, I don't really know what to.
We, we also had to have documentation of what was coming and going.
That's right. We never received that, staff never received that annual report that we're supposed to get, nor did we make those inspections, and the town attorney will be arranging for Jim and I to go out and do our, our inspections of the facilities.
But the documentation was a definite requirement?
Yeah, it was a requirement, I just never submitted, so. So there weren't violations of that protocol, of the previous one. So, but I thought I'd notify you that that is maybe coming for you. At this particular time, in the, in the capacity that you've given me for the 50 cents before they come to you, it's not, it's not, it comes to your attention. When I get that information, I'll be good with that.
Anything else?
That's it.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Moved in second, but all in favor?
We need a job.
Meeting's adjourned. Well, we had time track one. And the first part.